Selectmen's meeting, and then do a brief recess, do the Soil Board, and then go back into the Selectmen's meeting. Motion to open?
Second.
Today is Wednesday, June 1st. It is the meeting of the Krishnap Board of Selectmen, calling the meeting to a quarter. Please rise for the pleasure of the committee.
Pleasure to be here in the United States of America. To do it correctly for justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with the meeting of justice for all.
You're here with me with the mask and a little bit rusty. I haven't had a mask on for quite some time, but I am on the table. As I mentioned, we do have a Soil Board meeting, so I'd like the Board, we go into recess, brief recess, to go into the Soil Board, where we will discuss the organization of that Board. Is there a motion to recess the Selectmen's meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to open the Soil Board?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. We are in now the Soil Board meeting. As you can see on the agenda, there's a few items here. I think it's a little premature for that, but I do think this Board needs to organize or reorganize. And as you know, there's a lot of moving pieces and a lot of moving parts to the Soil Board. A lot of it pertains to PJ Keating, as you know. Unfortunately, of these Board members, I am the only one, the last man standing, as far as in the way of current lawsuit, personal lawsuit, with PJ Keating. So I'm somewhat hamstrung from some of the things that I can and cannot do, or cannot say. However, in the past, I do think, you know, serving as the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, it's an opportunity for other Board members to serve and serve as the Chair of the Soil Board, and with the Board members serving as ranking members. I do think any current Chairman of the Board, Board of Selectmen, should not serve as the Chair of another Board. I think that's just too much authority and too much power, so I think that that should be farmed out. And, you know, I do have some thoughts about a proposal. I put it on the table that the Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen would serve as the Chair of the Soil Board, and then that would be on a rotating basis. In this way, there would be always some continuity, right? There'd always be a deep bench. However, that would be my proposal, unless somebody else wants to step up and has a different proposal to talk about that. But I do not believe the other items that are on this agenda tonight are too premature to do that, especially without being organized. So gentlemen, I put that out there, that proposal for discussion or deliberation. If you're not comfortable taking that up today, you want to discuss it, you know, think on it and discuss a little, we can table it. But I do think, you know, amongst the three of us, somebody other than the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen should serve as the Chairman of that committee.
So I guess your motion, theoretical thinking, would be to have myself as the Chairman of the Soil Board. Is that correct?
You just happen to be the Vice Chair, right? So again, it's not based on person, it's based on whoever the Vice Chairman is, and then, you know, next year when you're the Chairman, Mr. Hinckley would then slide into that spot. I think it's a really important committee, it's an important Board, but to have the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen serve as the Chairman of that, I think is just, it's too much for one person, I think it's just too much authority over, you know, two important boards.
I think basically what you mentioned about the litigation thing is a lot of merit to the conversation. Mr. Hinckley being our newest Selectman, my experience with what's going on at PJ Keating, I'd be more than happy to take on the role as Chairman of the Soil Board.
So is there a kind of a motion to?
Chairman?
How about we do this? If we could just maybe a motion to adopt the policy of the Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen shall serve as the Chair of the Soil Board. This year it just happens to be you. Good luck for us, because you are, Mr. Gaspar, probably the most qualified and the most experienced on this issue, and I think the right man for the job at the right time. So if we have a motion to adopt the policy of the Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen shall serve as the Chairman of the Soil Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the Vice Chair of the Select Board as the Chairman of the Soil Board.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. It does happen to be Mr. Gaspar, so thank you for stepping up and taking that on. Regarding the items on this agenda, I do think, Mr. I guess, Chairman of the Soil Board, if you'd like to table those, it is premature to do that, and we can have a separate Soil Board meeting dedicated to these issues, separate and apart from the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation to the Board to also have an executive session pending litigation with PJ Keating with Town Council, prior to coming out, out of the gate and having public discussions with our business.
At a future date, right?
At a future date, that is correct.
Okay, great.
And I make them, that was a motion?
Second.
And I'll make a motion to table the remaining items.
Can I second that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, great, thank you. A little bit anticlimactic, folks, but I do think it's important to get our house in order before we start taking on all these issues, okay? Thank you. With that, is there a motion to adjourn the Soil Board meeting and go back to the Selectmen's meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, motion passes. Motion to open the Selectmen's meeting?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We've got our money's worth today, okay? So, thank you very much for your indulgence, indulgence today. We do not have any meeting minutes to be considered. Our first appointment is with Heather Chu and Rebecca Tomlinson. This is the feel-good part of the meeting. Ladies, if you could come up and talk to us about your endeavor and spirit of...
Good afternoon. I would just like to thank the Board for allowing us to have this fundraiser that we had, which was very successful. All the residents and other folks came out and they showed their generosity to the animals of our town, and it allowed us to be able to share some of that with shelters and some of my feral feeders, as well as my wildlife rehabbers. So it worked out really well. We had dog food, cat food, we had some wildlife, animal rabbits, guinea pigs, that I was able to share with everyone, and everyone was happy, and we're hoping that in the fall we can do this again, and hopefully it'll be as successful. So Town Krishnap came forward, as they always do, and they helped us out, so made us happy, made a lot of the animals happy, and a lot of my feral feeders, as well as the rehabbers and shelters. Because after COVID, as we had suspected, a lot of the shelters are being filled with animals that people took in during COVID, and now unfortunately they are surrendering them. So the food really came in handy. So again, thank you for allowing us to do this.
Yeah, of course, you mean, this is a no-brainer. Thank you for coming forward. I mean, I guess the question I have too is that, like, you know, there are people who need assistance, who need help, and you always just think in terms of food pantry and food for humans, right? But those, the people who do need help often have, time have pets, and are we helping, you know, is that part of that equation as well?
Absolutely, we still...
By having food and those resources?
Yeah, absolutely. We still have food over at the Council on Aging, so if anyone needs anything, they can give us a call, and certainly we can deliver. That's what I was doing all last week, I was delivering it out to our shelters, our rehabbers. There were some folks that I did reach out to that I knew needed help, so it worked out really well.
That's amazing. And it could be, you know, this could, the donations can be on a rolling basis, right? It doesn't have to be event-specific, right?
No, not at all.
So people, people want to donate and contribute to our efforts here, and Becky and Heather's efforts, please contact either the Selectmen's Office, or Rebecca, or the Council on Aging, and donations will take them at any time of the year, it just doesn't have to be at a specific event.
Correct.
That's awesome. Great, thank you. I know Heather, this, I'm sorry, Mr. Gaspar?
No, I just want to thank Ms. Tomlinson and Ms. Heather Chu for their efforts. I mean, it was extraordinary. I stopped by the Council on Aging and dropped off a donation myself, and I just couldn't believe the room full of food. So congratulations on your efforts. I mean, you exceeded, I bet, your own expectations, right?
We did.
On the food drive. It's really commemorable for what you did for the community and all the folks here, so thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd like to say something. It was nice to finally meet both of you. I've been watching you, both of you, do tremendous things for our town for a long time, and it's nice to be a part of the team that you guys are on, and I just want to say thank you.
Well, welcome to the team of Krishnap. Really, welcome to Team of Krishnap, absolutely.
You are true assets to this town, and we all appreciate you.
Thank you.
I mean, this year is, like, you know, some of the little things that all get built upon what makes this town so great, right? Is that, you know, whether it's your efforts there, or, you know, the Lions Club, we've got so many organizations, Boy Scouts, who contribute to the overall, you know, quality of life in our town, and that's what a small town's all about. So thank you very much, keep it up, and whatever we can do to assist, we will.
Thank you.
And I know...
Well, she didn't say too, because she was there.
Yes, I know you want to also say something of an event that took place recently.
So, we submitted a meeting mail. We just want to thank Mr. Kelly for sponsoring our Welcome Back BBQ. You know, you've watched the news, mental health, there's such a crisis among, especially among our seniors, who just have been isolated for two years, they're in financial crisis, they may look at the prices at the grocery store. Mr. Kelly swooped in and he paid for all the food at the cookout, so they enjoyed hamburgers, hot dogs, they danced all afternoon to the meadow larks, I gave you some pictures. He was there, he was grilling, Becky was there, the two of you were there, so it was really, again, kind of what you said, like, this is just a small town, we pulled together, and so everybody in this room is very appreciated.
All right, yeah, thank you, Mr. Kelly. I can say, I'm glad we signed your contract, because in a small, in a small time, you know, from the time we brought you on as interim to now as full-time, Mr. Kelly, you have made a tremendous impact. And so for that, thank you. I think, you know, those small gestures are really important, that's really critical, thank you.
The thanks go to those people over there. They're the ones who organized it.
Yeah, I think he has two big hairs named Heather and Becky, but, you know.
All right, guys, well, thank you, you guys are a great team, and I love to see you guys. Thank you, ladies. All right. Next item on the agenda is under the DPW. Mr. Gaspar, I think you're going to be a busy man in the next few weeks, so I'll hand it over to...
Busy man for the last few weeks.
Turn it over to Mr. Menard.
Both of you, Kathy.
You're going to get me first.
All right, love it.
Just because, I'm going to talk about the RAP grant that we have. That was given to us by the state, so it's similar to Chapter 90. We received some information from Sean at the state that they are giving us a winter recovery assistance grant for $198,000, and that's in addition to our Chapter 90 funds. The only difference with this is Chapter 90 can roll, this cannot roll. We have to spend this money from between July 1st of this year and June 30th of next year, I was just explaining that to Mr. Menard. We have to have the work done, the invoices sent, and the money back from them by June 30th. So I think this is where we should spend this money first, in my opinion. Dan's going to talk in a minute about paving where the other money is, but this is a grant that's given to us, and it's a one-time. Only, and any money that's not spent by June 30th, we have to give back.
Is this a new program?
It's brand-new, only this year. I don't know if they will do it again next year.
I'll tell you what, first of all, I think it's an awesome program, but second, what I love about it is it forces us to have a sense of urgency on these projects, right? I mean, no fault of anybody, but I know that's, we've had a lot of grand ideas for a lot of things, and then something else comes in and takes over, and, you know, but I think the fact that we've got to compress timeframe to deliver results is really great. And, you know, Mr. Gaspar has really had a passion for these types of projects, and is working, you know, with utilities, so if the Board, Mr. Gaspar will accept, I'd like Mr. Gaspar to work with Mr. Kelly and the DPW to come back with a plan of where you want to tackle, what neighborhoods, or, you know, how you think we should spend this money, and then the Board will give its blessing, and so...
Yes, that, and we'll also have to discuss where we're going to spend our Chapter 90 money for next year.
Okay.
Dan has some information on that he's going to talk about.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As far as the RAP money goes, I mean, it's almost two-thirds what we get in for Chapter 90, right? It's 198, we get in roughly 315 or so.
Exactly.
Chapter 90 funds, so it's a good sum of money for us to make a good impact in our community. And as you stated in previous discussions with the Board with potholes and things of the like, Mr. Menard and I have had some engagement about that. Quick patch, that doesn't last, the time is now to be paved, and so, you know, I make a recommendation to the Board members, as well as Mr. Menard, to get a list together to bring forward, and have that discussion on what we're going to use this money for, and if we know of certain areas, and I could name off a few right now, just like tops of roads that are all banged up, that you'd really need to go curb-to-curb and patch a 24, 10-foot swath, and don't go over there, you can just go like that in a hole. That's not the way this money should be spent. I think we should be spending the money, but I think it should be spent wisely, and we do patching, we do correct patching, right? As we change our forte around on how we design and think of patchwork as more or less curb-to-curb, because a lot of roads need to have that curb-to-curb, and it ain't going to work just going in and, you know, in a bucket and dropping asphalt into a hole, a pothole. That stuff don't stay, and for instance, I'll give you one, one spot that I'm already, and I think you went over there this winter, Mr. Menard, was the curve on Middle Road to Peckham Road, that shop bend, that corner's all deteriorated over there. So that's something that you'd probably do a 30, 40-foot swath and just patch that whole corner right around and get it done and done, right? So that's just an example of an area of patching. When I say curb-to-curb, and that one might require 30, 40 feet, whatever, Mr. Menard determines, needs to be cut out and patched or milled, as we like to use the terminology, where you just plane it down an inch and a half, if that, if Mr. Menard determines the road can be milled, that's, that's his prerogative, as DPW directed.
Mr. Chairman?
I completely agree, specifically on that corner, it's dangerous at the point right there, because there's a big hole, and you have to jump the line, so stuff like that's definitely where we should focus at, I totally agree.
Great, can I have a motion to...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just so you know, this allows you to do work, some work that is not allowed under Chapter 90, and you can combine the two to come up with a program that is comprehensive for a certain section. So it is almost the frosting on the cake.
Great.
That you can use it to complete the whole picture.
That'd be good. We can, you know, so if we have a motion to designate Mr. Gaspar as the Selectmen's representative to work with Mr. Kelly and the DPW to come back, come back to develop a plan, come back to the Board for approval?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We'll be back anyway, we'll have, I'm working with them, we have to have a contract that will need to be signed by all of you as soon as I receive it.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
July 1st, right?
I'll have the contract before July 1st, if you signature.
Come see you, Kathy. Spend a lot of time in your office.
All right.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, next item is speaking of road paving, schedule and street opening permit discussion. Again, it's Mr. Gaspar, you're going to be busy, Mr. Menard.
Okay. What we have, what we're going to be doing in the next few months, I guess, we have that emergency roadway funding, which was 30 grand that we have to use by June 30th. So I was going to use them on Highland and Hindle Street, which are dirt roads, they are accepted, and these are like a one-time thing that we figured I could get these done with that money, you know, doing it in-house, so...
What's the name of those roads?
Highland and Hindle, which is off of Randall and Lucia, it's kind of in the corner there. And this is one we're always fixing every year, it's a dirt road, and, you know, so it's one of them...
Highland, I'm sorry, Dan.
And Hindle. Hindle, there's smaller roads, shorter, not that wide either. There's only a few houses down there, but again, it's dirt roads, the act is an accepted street, even or not, dirt roads were accepted back then, I guess, so... So that's, that's one, I figured that money we could use for that, and especially when we get that, you know, that 198 for, you know, the patches, which we can do a lot of, you know, the milling in, taking two inches out. There's one on Nyes Lane, you could actually do all of Nyes Lane with that money, that kind of money.
Yeah, we should have a scheduled low in the cost breakdown with each road, that's what I like to see.
Okay.
So when you talk Highland and Hindle, you know, what's the cost versus what we have in the cumulative bank of Chapter 90, right? So if we have 400 and something, I'm pretty sure we have a decent amount.
Yep.
We just received 315 or whatever, right? Yeah, we have some leftover.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we're going to have a little...
So what's the bank versus what the cost is to do these kind of roads, and what's the plan? Because I know that you've got some money appropriated off this side that we approved in a pass through Matta Poison.
Correct, so that one, that's the one, you know, again, when we went for that, we might have to take some more money out of that, I don't know if the cost, I know the cost is going to be increased, you know, so it's not going to be the same type of money to do it, but actually, that's going to be in July. I talked to the reclaimer guy that, we got Murray, that won the bid, and he's going to be there in, like, the second week of July, that's what he told me, so, he told me he would be there in May too, so hopefully...
Just nice to see what your, what your bank is, and then what was subtracting off the bank, and then we'll have an idea of where we're going and what we should be preserving, because...
Yep.
Hamlin Street Bridge will be done, hopefully, spring of next year?
That's what I'm going up.
Getting kicked, the can getting kicked down the road by the state again?
Yeah.
And we talked about paving Hamlin Street, and that's going to be a pretty large cost, so...
Dan, you actually, if I'd have mentioned Hamlin Street, what is the design, are we in the design phase over there, and...
No, the design's done here, actually, it's going out for bid, you know, the state's putting out the bid, I think it's this month or July, I forget what...
Going out this week, they're going to have to bid this week.
Yeah, so I knew, yeah, this week.
So is there, opposite of the, you know, the little factory?
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Is part of the design at all, you know, to be, would you be able to create some, you know, like, lookout area or some area for people to, you know, if they wanted to hang out and relax?
Well, we were kind of looking at it all, no, really wasn't, and we kind of wanted to do a sidewalk, and we were looking into that, and that turned into a, too much, I guess, and they had, you know, all the designs, they had like 20 engineers over there, and they wanted not doing it, but, I do think the whole...
Well, it's, you give us the whole set of plans, you know? Well, it's going on, you know, maybe there's a change order or two that, but if, you know, if you can enhance that area, I think you're spot on, if you're good, and you're able to do some kind of sidewalk, or I see that as an opportunity there, for someone to go relax and, you know, chill out, so maybe...
Maybe the, the Hamlin Street crossing from Buzzards Bay Coalition, isn't it over there? They put that thing down at the end, so maybe we could talk to them and do something along the riverfront.
Yeah, when that, yeah, when that project gets rolling, yeah, definitely, I agree. Okay. We also have EverSource funds that they gave us for the, you know, the patchwork, that's, so the streets are Laurakine, Roach, Dorothy, New York Ave, Beaufield, and Willow is the streets that we're going to be...
Now, what about Anthony Street? Because I know I've read some of them.
Now, them, they're still working on, so they did some work on Anthony, I think Menard, I don't know, one other one over there. So usually we let them settle out, I don't, you know what I mean, because they don't contact them that good, so we let them go through, you know, at least six months' time before they, but this is the money, they, they gave us this money to, they would have to pay somebody to go patch the road, so the funding that they gave us was actually enough so we could overlay the whole entire street, so we're going curb-to-curb. So they were only going to do a nine-foot cut, but they, again, they have to pay somebody to do that process, so we're going to kind of go curb-to-curb on these.
Because I knew this was going to be on the agenda, I actually took another ride down Anthony Street, which is the next road over, I believe, from Laurakine, that I had mentioned, we're going to do the whole road.
Yep.
Previously that we talked about, Dan, with the EverSource funds, and I'll tell you, we, Mr. Kelly and I are working on a policy for road cutting, it's actually right here, it's pretty extensive, versus the couple of sheets that we have now. Once we're done reviewing that, we're going to share it with you and get some more input from you, but Anthony Street, because Mr. Wall now brought it to the Board's attention a few months ago, whatever it made, then, that road's just sunk in, so let me ask you this, fillable flow, they're not required to use fillable flow, because that's what fillable flow is supposed to prevent, is the sinking of the road, and that road, Anthony Street, because I was just there today, has sunk about six inches from the regular surface, and I, and the way I look at it, that's totally unacceptable.
Yeah, no, they, they're supposed to cover that, so like, you know, again, I wasn't aware of that, and if that comes to my attention, I just call them up, and them guys are going to go take, they'll, they have to keep that, maintain that patch until they do their final thing, which, like I said, when they settle out, they're not required to have...
Are they supposed to use fillable flow?
Nope. Their claim to it is it does something with their gas pipes or something, so they don't use it throughout the, I don't think any place in Mass, nobody I've never, every place I've worked, they've never used fillable, ever, nope. And I don't know, because they're a utility company and they can get away with that, I don't know, but no, they do not, so...
Well, they surely can't get away with what they're doing on Anthony Street. Because if I was a resident over there, I'd be irate, and I'd be on the phone with DPW every day until that road's done, because it's just, when I went down it today, I couldn't believe how far it's sunk in.
Yeah.
So that's totally unacceptable.
Have you any calls on that? I only got one call on that.
Well, then, there's a lot of patient people...
I have.
I've called.
Okay.
I have called.
My office?
Yes, I have, yes.
Well, she's right there, and I don't have...
When they were on Laurakine Avenue, I called, yes.
Oh, Laurakine, yeah, we have Laurakine on today.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Laurakine's written down, we're going to be doing that one.
So, we're going to, we're going to work, Mr. Kelly's got a pretty good plan here, it's a lot more extravagant than I ever thought for, you know, cutting roads, but it makes a lot of sense, it talks about cutting straight lines, I mean, it's like spaghetti out here in Krishnap, and they're just down the flock everywhere, so I'm at the mindset right now, is to stop EverSource's permit, right? Say no more of this until we figure this out, and you start doing your work.
I think we should, I mean, I know, I think it's a reasonable conversation, and we should probably put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
It would probably be two meetings.
Okay. Whatever it is, but I think we should put it on, post it on the agenda, if anybody from EverSource wants to come have that conversation with us, but, you know...
It's a disgrace.
It's outrageous, it's outrageous, and I, it's something that needs to be addressed, and thank you for your...
One thing, Mr. Chairman, to note is Todd and Nick, on these EverSource funds, they put segregated accounts together so it can be tracked, and they dealt with Dan and Kathy to make sure that this is all going to be able to be monitored now, anything from EverSource.
The funds that they're giving, the road it's committed to.
Yep.
And we don't want to get too far ahead either, because, you know, we don't know what's going to happen in our dialogue with EverSource, so I don't want to be taking in a million dollars from these people and be backed out 15, 20 roads, and then we ain't got the resources to go out there and do it, and that turns into a pile of you-know-what, so we need to get on this, Mr. Kelly, you and I.
Okay. Is that in the, I don't see the policy, is the policy in here?
No, it's something that Mr. Kelly and I have been reviewing, something he's presented.
So you'll bring that?
And we will forward it to the Board for review.
Okay.
Obviously, we'd like to give it to you a week or two before the meeting, there's a lot to digest inside of it, but I think Mr. Kelly's probably be pretty good at putting some bullet points together, so you don't have to go through the torture that.
Sounds like you're in the common going through. I'm a, I'm a big fan of the, for those of you who've worked with me in the past, I'm a big fan of the executive summary, you know, you just get right to the point.
Correct, that's what we'll try to provide for the board.
Thank you. All right, all right, well, thanks, Dan, keep on having good work, all right?
Great stand.
Say good work, great work. All right, item number three, sewer privilege fee for Bradford Street.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly, do we have to read all the whereas's?
No, uh.
Can I just make a motion to approve three Bradford Street, the sewer privilege fee for three Bradford Street and five Bradford Street, in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and ten dollars and forty-one cents for each one of them? Is that appropriate?
As presented.
As presented, make a motion to approve three Bradford Street and five Bradford Street as presented. Is the motion on the floor?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item under outdoor seating discussion, it looks like two, two, uh, two applications, Rochelle's and Kaplan's Place, first let's deal with Kaplan's Place, that seems to be a little bit of an easier, uh, one to deal with, for Kaplan's Place, Mr. Marolla, uh, petitioning for, um, outdoor seating, three tables, four to five chairs each, not a big deal, has parking and off-street parking as well to accommodate, and speaking with Mr. Marolla, we indicated it's not really, he just wants to have an additional area for people to hang out in the summer, I think it's a great idea, um, any questions regarding Kaplan's Place?
Chairman, I've been by, I've seen what he's put out there and laid out there, but the awnings attached to the building, um, I don't see it taking away any parking spots, to be honest with you, they were already parked out there by the fence, uh, makes it a little bit more difficult to back up with a, a donut mill building, but they still using the existing parking spaces, so I have no problems with that.
Mr. Hinkley?
I agree.
Is there a motion to approve Kaplan's Place outdoor seating?
Sure.
Second. All those in favor, is the motion is a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next one's a little dicier, again, I'm a big proponent of the outdoor seating, I think it's a great opportunity for businesses to, um, you know, accommodate the customers, but also we gotta be mindful and respectful of the, um, of the, the neighbors in the surrounding area and, and, uh, traffic concerns, and the, our building commissioner, Mr. Merritt, has, um, expressed some concerns, and I think there's some historical issues here, uh, with Rochelle's and Scuttlestone, and Mr. Gasper, you've expressed, uh, some concerns, uh, I think before we take any action at all, it would make sense to invite, um, the applicants in, uh, to a future meeting, to talk about some of the issues rather than either, you know, deny or modify, um, without having an opportunity to, to, to speak with them.
Yeah, I think Mr. Merritt's letter, Mr. Merritt's here actually right now, Mr. Merritt wrote the letter, the first letter that I have in my book on April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, um, with the elimination of parking spots closing off the back of the building for parking and emergency vehicles, this creates an issue where my customers are now parking on Main Street and Evergreen Drive, um, it is, it is a public safety issue to me right now, so unless and until the owner of the property opens up the back and brings that building back into compliance, um, you know, there's not much we can do.
Or maybe it's.
Without compromising public safety, and I'm never here to compromise public safety.
Right, and as much as we want to accommodate, I like to accommodate, we can't do that.
We should, we'd like to.
So, uh, we can head, direct maybe the town administrator to contact the O'Briens, um, express our initial, our concerns, and offer them the opportunity to come in and and talk it through, or, you know, work with Mr. Merritt and Mr. Kelly on a plan, and we submitted to the board, but I'm all for inviting them in to have a discussion about it, to see what we can do to make it work for them, I mean, in a, in a perfect world we can, um, but if, can only, can only fit so much into a certain area, and the last thing we're gonna do is see, see somebody get hurt, so, um, is there a motion to, uh, direct Mr. Kelly to reach out to, uh, the proponents, or to invite them in to discuss the, the application?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, we've got a couple doozies on our, uh, charts, um.
Disconcern on this level.
Unconcerned to be addressed. All right, public safety, overtime deficit and staffing, Mr. Kelly, you have brought this to, you raised this along with us a number of times, and so we've turned it over to you, and I think we've got respective chiefs here, we'll do one at a time, I think, and, you know, I'd ask both of you to, um, you know, just kinda frame the issue, but then I've got a proposal for a potential solution. Mr. Kelly?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've talked to both chiefs, there is, uh, an issue here where there is a large amount of, uh, deficit on the overtime accounts, uh, in the past, inter, intra-departmental transfers have been used to offset part of that, and then inter-departmental transfers after May one have been used to balance the budget. The issue we have this year is you have, uh, almost two hundred thousand, over two hundred thousand dollars in, uh, public safety, and then you have, uh, a, a, approximately a hundred and twenty-six thousand deficit in your town council account, and that is far beyond anything that you could rectify with reserves, it's, uh, I will discuss a possible solution at the end, but this is the, unless you rectify the situation by budgeting more in the overtime accounts, or by addressing the overtime issue with the chiefs, you're going to see this year after year after year, and I think the spreadsheets show that.
All right, um, so why don't we do this, we'll give Chief Richmond opportunity, again, we don't need, um, you know, we need to.
Executive summary?
Yeah, executive summary, please, thank you.
I'll be, I'll be as brief as possible, um, as Mr. Kelly, and first of all, uh, thank you and good afternoon, welcome, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
This was a great meeting to, to start it with. Um, Mr. Kelly alluded to the, uh, budget structure, uh, with the overtime and public safety, and I'll speak specifically to the police, because we have Chief Gallagher, uh, that can speak to fire, is, is traditionally, um, the overtime budget has been underfunded, and I'm not just talking about the last two years that I've been directly involved as police chief, um, going back probably nearly twenty-seven years I've been here, and I kinda liken the, the overtime budget, uh, for the police department almost like the snow and ice budget, yeah, your budget is a certain amount, you know it's not enough, and you hope for good weather, and when you don't get it, you scramble at the end and figure out how to, how to solve the problem, which is not really a, an excellent way of doing business. Now, the budget structure that we're at now, about, uh, four years ago, three, four years ago, um, the town made a commitment to cut overtime, your overtime at that time was in the mid-four hundred thousand dollar range, uh, and the, the commitment was made to hire three additional full-time officers, add an officer to, uh, uh, the day shift and evening shift, um, to reduce the overtime, so we'd have an extra officer on, first person out, sick, holiday, whatever, wouldn't need to be replaced, thus you wouldn't have to pay the overtime, so at that time, two hundred thousand dollars was taken from the overtime budget and added to, uh, regular salaries to accommodate that. At the same time, the, um, the town also made the commitment to go to a, a primarily civilian dispatch, uh, center, so in order to do that, we had to hire two additional dis, full-time dispatches, uh, to what we already had. So when I took over about two and a half years ago, uh, we had actually added five full-timers, um, three offices and two dispatches, uh, to the mix. Uh, what we've run into is, um, first thing is that the full-time personnel have the right of first refusal on, on any type of, uh, of shift work that comes available, which inevitably becomes overtime, so we, we actually added five people to the, to the line, so to speak. At, at the same time, we, um, we lost the use of, of part-timers, partially through attrition, because we've done so much hiring in the last three or four years, we've hired five or six, uh, full-time officers from our part-time ranks, at the same time, we weren't able to replenish those ranks for a couple of reasons, number one, um, COVID slowed down part-time academies, put a pause on part-time academies, and number two, uh, police reform in Massachusetts effectively ended the, uh, part-time police officer program. Uh, that coupled with the dwindling interest in, uh, pursuing career in law enforcement, uh, we are down currently to, to one part-timer, um, that has limited availability. In the past, we'd always have part-timers, you referred to a bench earlier, we'd always have four or five part-timers that maybe work one, two shifts a week at best, uh, when they were needed, there was always one or two of that group that were hungry and were looking to get on full-time, would take anything that came to them, so we were able to supplement the budget by utilizing part-timers, uh, for, for, up until the last, really, the last year and a half, um, that's, that's unfortunately gone away, and as you can imagine, there's a significant pay difference between paying a part-time, a straight time, and, and a full-time person overtime to fill in these slots. Now, specifically to, um, FY twenty-two, which is where we're at now, um, I mentioned earlier, you know, using that snow budget amount analogy, we pray for good weather, uh, traditionally, we, we hope that lightning doesn't strike, well, lightning struck a few times, uh, in twenty, in, in FY twenty-two. We don't budget, and have never budgeted for, for, for long-term injuries or illnesses, uh, for extended military leaves, or contraction negotiated buyouts. Uh, in FY twenty-two, uh, we have one officer that's out injured on duty, uh, has been out since late, late, um, late October, and, and is still out at this time, um, we had a retirement of a longtime officer just after July first, his contractual buyout, um, came from the salary line item, uh, we also had an officer leave that cashed in some time, so, um, those were things we didn't budget for, um, also, we've had extended military leave, as you know, as I've mentioned before, we've had two officers that started in the beginning of April, I'm sorry, the beginning of May, on extended military leave, and they're gonna be gone, we expected them to be gone a, a year, then we won't see them till maybe April of, of next year, um, when they, when they return. Part of the problem was, leading up to that deployment, it was, there was additional training, uh, that these officers were required to attend, uh, military leave, so we would lose them, we would have to replace them, or we wouldn't have them to, to, to backfill. Uh, in addition, the, the, the one, um, person that's in the National Guard that wasn't deployed, uh, went for about eight weeks, was activated by the National Guard, uh, and was up in Shirley God and Prisoners, uh, in the fall, so we lost the equivalent of, of ten months, uh, in counting, um, of, of, of an officer, you know, if you combine all the shifts. Um, we've also, in addition to that, we've had, uh, in this fiscal year, three legitimate, uh, and separate month-long, uh, uh, sick absences, um, three different officers, three different circumstances, were out for a month, so we lost three months there, um, we've had, we had an officer on lay-in duty for about, uh, four or five months, we, we made very good use of him, but he wasn't available to work those road shifts during that time, he's back to full duty now, not without an issue. We also had a couple instances continuing on, I hate to keep blaming back, blaming COVID and talking about that, but we had a couple of COVID cases and, and that required, you know, close calls and isolation, not a significant amount, but when you add it all together, it, it, it affects us, and again, I, I'll go back to the part-time, uh, the part-time problem, we, we've always had that, that, that advantage to use the part-timers, it's, it's a change in philosophy on, on how we've worked, unfortunately, it's, it's nothing that, that I did, the board did, um, State of Massachusetts, um, you know, implemented, uh, police reform, and there are some good aspects to it, and there are not some good aspects for it, and this is one of them, um, very similar to Kate Towns and West Towns are struggling with the same situation now. So that's, that's pretty much where we're at, I mean, it's, it's funding that, that's still remaining to come in, we have a small amount in grant reimbursements, maybe four to six thousand dollars coming in, uh, we still haven't got the general entry for the school department's por, uh, portion of the school resource, uh, officer's salary, they pay a portion of it, so we got about, maybe about twenty-eight thousand dollars, you know, coming in there. There might be, there'll be a slight overage in the regular line items, uh, for salaries, for dispatch due to grant reimbursements that we received early in the fiscal year, but, uh, that, that's pretty much where we're at now, um, as far as staffing goes, uh, we normally have twenty full-time officers, uh, full-time, yeah, full-time officers, seven sergeants, and, and thirteen patrolmen, um, we, one, one person, once, one, one of those people is out on, on medical, and two left to go to state police, and the other two, uh, have left to, uh, serve their country overseas, so we basically lost twenty-five percent of our department in a very short amount of time. Uh, the hiring process for civil service is difficult, uh, the list, uh, closed today, so gonna take a look at that list, there's a chance we might be able to hire, um, we'd certainly got to send at least one person to the academy, there's a chance that we might be able to get somebody that has an academy, uh, which will help us sooner than later, but if somebody needs a part-time academy, then we're not gonna, I mean, sorry, needs a full-time academy, we're not gonna see them helping the town and working here, uh, till probably April of next year, if, if all the stars align, depending on the, the timing of the academies. So, uh, things, you know, you know, whereas six months ago, we were, we were in pretty good shape, um, lightning struck multiple times and, and kinda put us in the situation we're in now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I, I do, I, I think, you know, I, I, just so you know, chief, I just received this packet with your explanation, normally I would go in and shoot the breeze with you.
Yep.
Um, in the scenes to get a better understanding, so I'll do that when, when we have time, but I think the chief brought out a, a pretty good point of something that we don't put in the police department's budget, and that is military leave, um, I think that could help offset some, if you use it, it's there, if you don't use it, it just turns over to free cash the following year, so I think that's something that maybe this board needs to have a discussion with the chief, try to come up with a calculation and maybe put that line item, an additional line item in your budget for that reason, to cover that expense.
Not that it helps us out now, but when these officers came to us full-time, they came to us full-time academy trained, um, compliments of the, the State of Massachusetts in, in the military, they put themselves through a full-time academy that we didn't have to pay for, or pay for the academy itself, or pay for their, pay their salaries, so there were significant savings there, but unfortunately, you know.
It's no fault, listen, they're serving our country, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
When they serve this country, um, I'm just saying, um, maybe we should add that line item to, to cover ourselves for the individuals we have, and obviously if we were to hire more people that have military experience and could be summoned out of the department to go serve, we, we need to up that line item.
And it, you know, despite the, the training they had, it really wasn't official until, I mean, April, one of the officers, he, he's previously served, uh, in, um, did a year-long deployment, probably about six or seven years ago when he was with the department, and uh, he was skeptical that he was, that he was going, he goes, hey, I've been there, done there before, and he goes, in my time, I've gotten back from my last deployment, I've been told I'm going to Africa, I'm going here, I'm going there, and it never came to fruition, and then this just morphed, you know, really official in, uh, really in April, so we knew, we knew it was on the horizon, just like we knew a couple of candidates going to state police, we just didn't know where the numbers were gonna fall on the list, so unfortunately, uh, that's where we're at, I mean, we'll be talking, I'll be going by the office tomorrow, uh, to grab a copy of the list tomorrow, uh, the hiring list closed today at four, so we'll get those applications out, and, uh, we'll probably, we'll be before you, sooner than later, looking for a full-time, for the two full-time appointments that we were, we were allotted, so.
Absolutely.
Anyone has any questions, like offline, you know where to find me.
Thanks, great.
Sixty-four minute.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Uh, a couple things on this, the chief mentioned that the salary, salary per line with hipper compensated absences, that, uh, now you can use the stabilization fund we began, so that will take care of that, however, when you look at this, the two thousand nineteen change to decrease overtime, uh, the overtime is still back in the four hundred to three ninety range, so that really did not do anything to help, what you've gotta do is drill down in and make sure, and you've gotta manage it differently. There is a surplus every year in the actual salary amounts, but, uh, as the chief said, this was a perfect storm for him, uh, but it's something that you're going to have to look at when we do the budget next year, how we're going to deal with this, and how we're going to deal with such things as long-term IOD, do you want to pursue involuntary disability retirements of those folks, or do you wanna keep them on the books? And, uh, it's a question that this board is going to have to take up in the future. As far as the solution for this year, once the fire chief is done, and I will tell you what my view is on how we can come close to balancing the budget.
Great, thank you, and I, gentlemen, I will propose a, you know, somewhat of a, um, long-term solution, or an opportunity to look for a long-term solution. Chief Gallagher, welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much, members of Board of Selectmen, good evening, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Leonard, I, you have before you a, uh, packet that went out from me last Friday afternoon to the town administrator, I hope you that's been included in your packet, because this will serve as the backup for my brief discussion tonight, uh, and then also, gentlemen, I just handed you two pages, if you look at page two, let that serve as your executive summary, uh, and as Chief Richmond said, there's been a lot of lightning strikes this fiscal year that's caused some deficits, but, uh, I think if we drill into the current deficits in the salary line items for the fire department, you're gonna see that there's a little bit of a silver lining. Uh, so currently, you know that we, we stacked the appropriation, uh, the fiscal year with fifty-eight thousand twenty-eight dollars in overtime, uh, for eight staff members, that has been structurally low for the last, uh, several years, and from the information that Mr. Kelly provided you, you can see that we have overspent that pretty consistently since, uh, two thousand and twelve, uh, because it doesn't reflect the actual cost. Currently, as of June first, uh, we have a, I'm sorry, the twenty-sixth, which was the last payroll, we have an overtime deficit in the fire department of just over fifty-eight thousand dollars. I am anticipating a deficit in part-time EMTs of twenty-two fifty, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, this is page two of the, uh, handout that I just gave you. So the projected fiscal year twenty-two salary deficits is sixty thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. We have some surpluses to offset that, full-time surplus, if I project the known over, uh, salary costs for the fire department from now until the end of the fiscal year, including that payment that will go out in July for that last week in June, we will end that line item with a surplus of thirty-eight thousand twenty-three dollars. Call salaries, as of today, with the payroll for the month of May in the books, I am projecting a surplus of twenty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars, so when we add those two surpluses to the projected deficit, we're looking at a deficit as of today of five thousand dollars, a little over five thousand dollars. Now, we have payroll costs in overtime expenses between now and the end of the fiscal year, the month of June, uh, the detailed memo that I sent you breaks down where our overtime use occurs, we have known expenses such as vacation and personal time. use occurs. We have known expenses, such as vacation and personal time. If we were to multiply all that by the average overtime rate, we're still short. It's more than $58,000 that we appropriated. But we've been playing the shell game for the last 10 fiscal years where we use the surplus and other line items to offset the budget deficit in overtime. Overtime's been something that we've stayed away from addressing. We also have several unknown expenses. Sick time is an unknown expense. You'll see what the cost of sick time is in the detailed memo. When we have folks departing, we had a resignation, and we had a retirement during the current fiscal year. Those are unknown costs. We had to cover 1,100 hours until the new people were in place. So if we add all that up, if we look at those known and unknown sources of overtime expense, we get into the hole that we're currently in. However, we've planned for the surplus in, as in the past, to take a bite out of what we start the month of June with, with what we actually end the month of June with. So there are some more expenses coming. One of us, we have eight full-time members now. One of them and their wife just had their first child, and he is going to be out for maternity leave. We have folks who are using up their vacation because they have to. They can't roll it over. So we're burning, they're burning up the overtime by taking their vacation, because if they don't use it, they lose it. We have personal time, but again, they can't roll over. If they could, it would come off the overtime costs for this fiscal year. So I have stopped the drills for the month of May. That's a drain on call salaries, and it's a drain on overtime for the full-timers that participate. So we did not do any drills in the month of May. We won't do any in the month of June. And a quick survey of our full-time staff, we found in excess of 55 hours of time off that folks are asking if they could roll it into the next fiscal year. And that would be 55 hours that would not have to be covered by overtime. But that's going to be a decision for you, gentlemen, to make. I know there's been opposition in the past about rolling over employees' hours into the next fiscal year, but if we're, if you feel threatened by that amount of deficit in overtime, then maybe that's something that you would consider.
Chief, when you say 55 hours, is that 55 hours cumulative?
Two employees have stepped forward to say that they would like to roll over some time, or they're going to use it. Others-
Twenty-seven and a half per individual?
I think it's 30, 36 hours of personal for one, and 14 or 15 of vacation.
Whatever the combinations.
Right. But if there's a approval by the Board of Selectmen to allow full-time firefighters to roll over 48 hours of vacation and 36 hours of personal time, that may move some of those who are rushing to take vacation time by the end of the year. Every yellow spot is an open shift, 10 hours or 14 hours. The vast majority of them are going to be filled by full-timers, who have the right of first refusal per the contract. Others are going to be filled by some of our call firefighters. So, you know, if we can erase some of this yellow, that overtime that doesn't need to be paid, and that could be done, we could stop that process tonight if you were to approve rolling over 48 vacation, 36 personal.
All right.
Thank you, chief. That's the executive summary.
Awesome. Thank you very much. So, gentlemen, we've had a chance to talk to Mr. Kelly earlier in the day. And I know we're putting a lot on this, Mr. Kelly, but this is, you know, when you've got a new, when you've got a Ferrari, you're going to ride it, right? And so, talk to Mr. Kelly. I think would be, I'm sorry, does any board member have any questions or comments? Or I think an appropriate next steps would be to have Mr. Kelly work with the respective chiefs on a plan to curtail or to examine and curtail, you know, come up with a plan that would allow us to curtail overtime, or at least plan properly for overtime. Report back to the board no later than September 1st for our consideration. But I think, you know, components of that plan would be early detection, right? And then other types of, you know, truth in budgeting. I think we've got to really get down to what we have in place. Is our business model working? And, you know, we've got to address this, because we talked about, right, Mr. Gasper, Mr. Hinckley, I know you've talked about it, not using free cash. Like, there are certain principles we should have when building a budget, and to be able to predict and have reliability is really critical. So we're not going through this 11th-hour fire drill. And I just think for everybody, all total, it'll be, it'll be a better product that we provide to not only the department heads, but to the taxpayer as well. You know, it costs money to operate public safety, but public, public safety, DPW, that's, that's our remit, right? That's what we're responsible for. And so we've got to make sure we get this right and get it in the budget anyway. So if you guys are okay with that-
That's three largest budgets.
If you guys are okay with that plan, have Mr. Kelly work with the chiefs and report back no later than September 1st.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we're already into the new fiscal year, but so that we don't end up in this same position next year.
Right. So there's a motion. Could I have a motion to direct Mr. Kelly to work with the respective chiefs on that and report back September 1st?
So?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. Kelly, I know you have some thoughts on what we're going to do with the current issue now, correct?
Quickly, police deficit, the projection looks like it's going to be 151,000, 152,000. Quick projection for fire looks like it's 43,379. You also have a major deficit in the legal expenses of 100, projection of 126,000.
What was police, what was the projected police, sorry?
Working with Nick, projected deficit in fire, we can handle with the transfer from other departments. I'm advising that the last deficit that we deal with is the legal deficit, because that is the one that the auditors will least likely to ding us, because you're dealing with a court, multiple court cases, and you've had at least one judge, one agreement that costs you $25,000 in the legal budget. So I think that is the one we solve last. As far as the police, I'm looking right now at a solution that brings us within 40,000. And as the police chief and the fire chief said, transferring inside the department amounts, and then transferring from other departments, other budgets. There are a couple minor deficiencies in various departments that can be covered by transferring expenses, which I've frozen into deficit salary lines, 500, $800 here and there. So what, right now, we're looking at about $40,000 that we need to cover between police and fire. And that will, that's a snapshot now. We'll know more when we look at the various departments' budgets, and we see exactly what we're dealing with. I think we'll be able to cover both of them. The deficit for the legal, if we transfer the land court money, that brings it down If we have to, we can carry it forward to the Fall Town meeting, and we can, at that point, use excess revenue from this year, which we believe will be somewhere around 400,000 to cover it.
Okay. So to knit all that together, Mr. Kelly, you think a mid-July timeframe to come back with a recommendation, with a final recommendation?
I would like to do it, depending on our analyses, I'd like to do it, if I can, earlier. Each meeting, I'd look at the 29th of June as a timeframe to resolve police and fire deficiencies.
Okay. So July 15th is the cutoff for any interdepartmental transfers? That's the end, as D.O. would say, right? So you can't do any more, will you, nearly?
Right. So I, that's why I want to do it on the 29th.
Okay. So we'll have to figure out what kind of a structural deficit we have from there remaining. Last year, we had 80,000 from police to cover overtime, and 40,000. So I think fire is pretty much on track, chief. Fire looks like it's on track for the same amount as last year. Last year, we did interdepartmental transfers to cover 40, 41,000. I have my interdepartmental transfers here running about the same rate. So that's not too, too bad from, you know, from that department's perspective. From the police department's perspective, it was $80,000 last year to-
152.
I mean, that's pretty significant. That's a $70,000 jump. So there's some discussion that we're going to have to have overall moving forward. I just, it always concerns me when, if, if we can't cover our expenses, and it really, it's unfortunate, but I think, Mr. Kelly, you put a freeze on other departments' expenses right now, other than salaries.
Correct, and utilities.
So it hinders, not only is this problem hindering our other departments' ability to move forward and do what they need to do, because of their allocated funds were actually taken from them now by freezing their expenses as well to cover this budget deficit. So I think there's a, we definitely have a structural issue that we need to resolve. I think it's, you know, I've been talking about this for quite some time, the structural deficits of municipalities, where we only have so much money for budgetary reasons. So I think it's finally at the endgame, and it's going to be a long, hard conversation that we're going to have to have with residents and department heads and employees. But the time is here. It's, it's not going to be an easy conversation, what we need to do. And I think we need, as you said, Mr. Chairman, we need to figure this out and get the money that's actually necessary to run these departments there. How do we do that with the limited funds that we bring in? We'll have to figure that out moving forward.
It becomes an exercise in prioritization, right? What do we want our community to look like? What services do we want to provide for residents? And that's why we ran for office, right? You've got a vision, you have a vision, I have a vision, hopefully collectively, we're going to put our, make it one vision, right? And so I know, Mr. Gasper, you and I are kind of involved with the contractual negotiations for police and fire, but I do think, Mr. Hinckley, this is a good opportunity for you to, and if you have the time to do it, to work with Mr. Kelly, just to kind of wingman him during this process up until, you know, it's just a good immersion, a good chance to learn.
The more information I can absorb right now, the better. Try not to overburden myself and lose track of what I'm really paying attention to, but, you know, I'm good at taking notes and paying attention. Mr. Kelly's a good teacher, too, so.
So Jamie, to be realistic, so you're looking at, you're targeting June 29th to provide us a recommendation on how to close the gap?
I might come in on the 15th as a partial one, or dealing with one department, and then come in on the 29th with the second, or all of them.
Good. So if I could have a motion to direct Mr. Kelly to work on a plan and report back no later than June 29th, to a plan to close the deficit?
Sure.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. He's, he does have a little bit of wiggle room, as I said, until I 15th, the prime of this, so it's something that we've got to do, but I agree, the sooner the better.
Sense of urgency, create a sense of urgency, gets things moving. You know, we just can't have things linger. Thank you. All right. The next item to the chief, thank you very much. And I know this isn't a great conversation you like to have. Don't let this take away from the good work you do on a day-to-day. You guys do outstanding work. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks.
All right. The next item on the agenda is Mr. Eric Aruda, who was asked to work for the board. As you know, Mr. Aruda, please come to the podium. As you know, Mr. Aruda was a candidate for the fire chief's position, and the board made, made an appointment of Mr. Tom Farland. Mr. Aruda, in his, you know, participation in that process, has some questions, questions of things that he wanted to share with the board. And, you know, just to, you know, kind of clear the air, I guess, if you will, Mr. Aruda, this is your opportunity, right? This is your time to share with the board, your view of the process, what you feel, you know, took place or should have taken place. But I do want to just say this, and I'm not saying this to be, I'm not saying this to be difficult, but legal counsel has said, we do not have any obligation to do this, but we are doing it, right? And is that, we felt like that's the moral, it's the right thing to do for a long-term employee. And so the floor is yours. I don't know that we'll take any action tonight. I think we'll take it under advisement, but this is your opportunity, and we wanted to give that to you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for having the courage to come forward.
Appreciate it. Good evening, Board of Selectmen. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Hinckley, Mr. Kelly, it's not, good evening. Again, my name's Eric Aruda, one of the candidates, one of the two candidates for the fire chief, the candidates, for the town of Acushnet. The other candidate was, that, like Mr. Loane, how the chairman said, that was chosen by the Board of Selectmen was Thomas Farland. Before I begin, if I just may ask, Mr. Hinckley, were you able to review the resumes?
I was.
All the material, all the supporting material that you had?
Everything that you presented, I had here, and I wasn't able to review it.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you. So, gentlemen, on Thursday, May 5th, 2022, I submitted to the Board of Selectmen a formal appeal of the fire chief candidate's appointment process that concluded with the appointment of Thomas Farland as the town of Acushnet's next fire chief. If you need a copy of that, I have it here. If you need it. If you've already seen it, that's, that's fine. The process for the appointment of the fire chief consisted of candidates being assigned an assessment center ranking weighted at 60%, scenario-based exercises, 40% written examination score, and then a final ranking weighted at 60% of the assessment center as a final score. As a whole, added with a 20% education and 20% fire and EMS experience, were to be developed by the town. The Board of Selectmen mentioned during the appointment process on April 12th of 2022, that having the assessment center conduct this process, as well as having a fully transparent process, was beneficial. Thomas Farland and I agreed. In addition, the board also mentioned that we should request and review the selection process results. Thomas and Farland and I both requested the results, and on April 22nd, 2022, 10 days later, the acting town administrator, Mr. Kelly, thank you, provided to both of us the documentation, scores, and results used in the appointment process. Thomas Farland and I met, and a discussion was had over the results of the fire chief candidate appointment process, particularly the ranking basis sheet. And the ranking basis sheet was provided to the Board of Selectmen as the foundation for which they appointed the new fire chief. After review, it became clear that the ranking basis sheet results proved to be inaccurate, and included discrepancies, omissions, and incorrect facts. I told Tom that I would be submitting an appeal against the process, and that the appeal was in no way against him. Tom mentioned to me that I should do what I feel I need to do, what is right. Once the appeal was submitted, former chairman, Mr. Drosch, directed me to supply the Board of Selectmen with a detailed list of what was omitted, where inaccurate data was used, and the information that was incorrect. I've highlighted the areas on the ranking basis sheet of inaccurate results and areas where information was omitted. I have that here Gentlemen, I also have the supporting document behind it, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I guess some supporting document, that'll open it.
Take it again.
You're welcome. So I'd like to, we're just, there was three really aspects to the appointment process, to the results. One was the sixty percent assessment center, and then there was a twenty percent education component, and then there was a twenty percent experience component. And I'd like to start with the ranking basis, just a brief information on the facts that were included and presented. So the town of Acushnet hired Badge Quest Incorporated for close to nine thousand dollars to develop, construct, validate, administer, and score the fire chief assessment center. The assessment tested and evaluated our knowledge, our skills, abilities, and personal characteristics. Through a series of exercises, we were evaluated on our performance in each exercise using predetermined criteria. Badge Quest states that the process provided information about candidates that is unattainable from written tests, interviews, or other means. Through an orientation process, Tom and I were given an overview of the assessment center, the exercise design or the rubric, protocols, the scope of the exercise, the parameters of role play, definitions, the scoring scale, and other information. Thomas Farland and I both agreed that the exercises we performed and were evaluated on by Badge Quest Assessment Center was consistent with the challenges that were specific to the role of the Acushnet fire chief. Badge Quest Assessment Center process was a well-organized process that fairly measured the qualities needed for the chief of this department. During the appointment meeting, the Board of Selectmen stated that they were to choose, that they had to choose the fire chief candidate based on the assessment. The Board of Selectmen also stated that my leadership is key to the fire department. Once able to review the results of the process, my ability to lead was affirmed through the assessment center portion of the selection process. I discovered that the results of the assessment center validated myself as the most qualified candidate for chief of the Acushnet fire department for the considerable difference between the score of the other candidate, Thomas Farland, who was chosen by the next, as the next fire chief of the Board of Selectmen. This discovery led me to review the entire fire chief candidate appointment process. The ranking basis for the twenty percent education evaluation developed by the town is inaccurate. And put, and this is important to note, please, there was no rubric supplied to the candidates explaining the criteria, the weight, the values, or what was gonna be formulated into the results. The reference material, there was no reference material included to how the results values were figured. I'd like to start in the result, in the education, where double credits were given for degrees. The education and value of a two-year degree is the first half of the total value of a four-year degree, not an additional value. An associate degree transfers into a bachelor's degree program. And if I can use this as, as an example, candidate A decides to go to Bridgewater State College to pursue a bachelor's in fire science administration. Candidate B goes to Bristol Community College for a two-year associate's in fire science. After the two-year stint in getting an associate's degree, candidate B then transfers to Bridgewater State College, where two years after that, both candidate A and candidate B walk across the stage and they get their bachelor's degree in fire science administration. And now candidate B gets more credit and gets credit for the, for the, for the associate's degree when it was part of the process. And so you can see that the created values on the educated score and the ranking basis sheet, and on your sheets that you have in front of you, it was two points for an associate's degree, four points for a bachelor's degree, and then there was an additional four points for another bachelor's degree. But it's inconsistent with the values written, and I have in that supporting documentation, there were some values written on both candidates' resumes where the resumes, where on the resumes, the number of two point five was written for each degree. Having double bachelor's degrees in a situation like that, and I can kind of reach back a little bit. In the age that we go to school in now, many of the courses are transferable, a lot of the core courses are transferable. Your basic science, your math, your Englishes are transferred. So having the same equal value to have the same, to have a bachelor's degree and have those points doubled was a question. One thing that I, that I looked prior, we've, we've, this is the first process coming out of civil service to be able to choose a chief. The process before was always in civil service, and the town and the fire department both agreed that we wanted to have a good look at the person and their abilities to be able to lead this department, as opposed to just having a good Saturday and taking a test. So prior, prior to that, prior to the change, one of the things that the civil service did do, and I know that we're not in there, they had a, a very strong list and ranking of how degrees work and how it's, how it's credited towards the individuals. And where, if you had a degree, whether it's associate's or a bachelor's degree, in the field that you were applying for the job for, that was, that was a certain value, it had a certain credit. And then any, any degree beyond that, it was a different value because it wasn't a direct involvement to, to that field. Now that, again, we're not part of civil service, but it could have been used as a, as a, as a point or threshold or just a point of reference. Formal education acquired from the Massachusetts Fire Academy and other relevant, relevant education institutions necessary to perform at a technically advanced level was omitted. Education submitted through the application process, through the three answers to the questions requested by the Board of Selectmen, and through the interview process, they were also admitted. Additional education, education on the job, the education needed to maintain required certifications and licenses as both a firefighter and a paramedic can be found in the candidate's personnel files through the chief of the fire department's office. The fire chief was never consulted during the fire chief candidate appointment process, nor were the candidate's personnel files requested or reviewed. In this day and age, an employee's personnel file is as important to an employer just as, as much as it is to the employee. Within it, you will find the history of the employee, education, all the training that they've acquired throughout their career, and experience. For promotions, you may find accommodations and awards, but you also may find disciplinary issues and issues that could affect the overall department and the town. Again, the personnel file wasn't reviewed. My current, my curriculum vitae is located in my personnel file, and it includes over fourteen hundred hours of relevant education. Fourteen hundred hours is the equivalent time it takes to gain a master's degree. That was all too admitted. And gentlemen, I have the updated curriculum vitae here. And again, if there was a look at the personal files. Thank you. Also within the education component, Thomas Farland did not receive credit for pro board certification. That was also found in his resume packet. Credit was, was awarded for an expired certification. Thomas Farland was given credit for an expired pediatric advanced life support certification that expired on October of twenty twenty-one, and that was found in his resume packet. Now, I talked to Tom, it is valid, he has it valid, he's updated that, but in the, the copy that you, that was submitted to the board that got credit was, was expired. The ranking basis for the twenty percent fire and EMS experience evaluation is inaccurate. Both candidates agree that the job of the fire chief requires years of experience. The job posting required a minimum seven years of full-time employment, serving as a full-time firefighter and EMT paramedic. There was no, again, just, just similar to the education, there was no rubric explaining the criteria weight or the value of the formulated for the results. There was no reference material that was included, used in how the results were figured. But it was evident that the fire chief candidate's work experience was only given a value for years of service with the town of Acushnet. The years of service on the ranking basis sheet for myself are incorrect. I have twenty years of service with the town of Acushnet, and on the ranking basis sheet, I was credited with nineteen. But I started to ask myself, how does years working for the town shed any light unto what kind of leader a person is or their ability to run the department? And I have another example for you, my wife gave this to me, she helped me out with this one. So you're looking for a cardiologist to do your open heart surgery, okay? No, I don't have that, this is just an example, okay? Are you looking at how long they've been a cardiologist or their proven performance? Years of experience tells us nothing about the level of experience. And I'd like to add this, the first three definitions from the Merriam-Webster's dictionary of experience. It's the fact or state of having been affected by or gained knowledge through direct observation and participation. The second one is practical knowledge, skill, or practice derived from direct observation of or participation in events or in a particular activity, say firefighting or paramedicine. Now here's the third one, where I can see where it can be a little confusing. The third definition says the length of such participation. And they gave an example, I just put the word, the name candidate in it, but the candidate has ten years experience in the job. The years of service is not the experience, it's what, it's the length of such participation. What did they participate in? What did they gain for knowledge? What were their skills? What did they derive? And what did they take away from all those years? All relevant fire and EMS experience from within and outside the fire department was completely omitted for both candidates. The fire and EMS experience was submitted through the application process, the three answers to the questions requested by the Board of Selectmen, and through the interview process. Again, all three of those things were omitted in formulating the education's, experience score. My work experience as a highly skilled technical rescue technician under contract with the town of Acushnet, I have a memorandum of agreement that I have for twelve years for the town of Acushnet, for Bristol County, Massachusetts, and beyond, to work as a technical rescue technician. And for, it was required that we carry four fields of technical rescue, and I've upped it to ten for myself, and we have to maintain that, and we have to do a certain company C training every single year. The experience as a technical rescue technician for twelve years was omitted. My work experience as the Acushnet fire EMS training coordinator for the last nine years was omitted. My work experience as a state instructor, a trainer and lecturer for the Department of Fire Services, the Massachusetts Fire Academy for the last three years, teaching firefighter recruits the education and the performance, the certifications that they have to have, that we hire them to be able to have this job. Those three years were omitted. Additional experience, experience on the job and experience training on, needed to maintain required competency, certification, and licenses as a firefighter, paramedic, that's right, it can be, it can be found in the candidate's personnel file through the chief of the fire department's office. The chief was never consulted in the fire chief candidate appointment process, nor were the candidate's personnel files requested or reviewed. My curriculum vitae, which you have in front of you now, gentlemen, that's in my personal file and includes additional work experience expected of the chief, such as introducing new policies. I've piloted new programs, I coordinated fire control and training, enforced codes, and all that was omitted. I just wanna conclude here, as an educator at the state level for the Massachusetts Fire Academy Career Recruit Training Program, I have an influential connection to the minds of the next generation of firefighters. We strive to instill in them the importance and the value of continuing education throughout their careers in firefighting and emergency medicine and continuing to gain valuable experiences through training by returning to the Fire Academy and through other means. Tom and I both value education, we both have college degrees. But having a college degree was not a requirement to apply for the chief's position for the town of Acushnet. Obtaining a higher education proves that you can succeed in academia, but not necessarily in the real-world job situation. Success in actual work proves more about what you have to offer. Seeking out relevant educational opportunities beyond degree programs exemplifies self-motivation, determination, and leadership qualities necessary for promotion and career advancement in the fire service. During the years as a full-time firefighter, EMT, paramedic, I was, it was, and it is important to me to gain on-the-job leadership, management, and role experience above and beyond my current position. The Acushnet fire, full-time staff, fire department full-time staff has no promotional rank structure. But the organization of the fire department as a whole does, and it outlines the expectations of each rank. Looking at my expectations and my, my experience and my accomplishments over the years, I have reached milestone goals that are consistent with the expectations of typical ranked firefighters, including the roles of lieutenant, captain, deputy chief, and chief. Gentlemen, the town was to develop the ranking of the twenty percent education and the twenty percent fire and EMS experience with the overall fire chief candidate process. All of my experience, formal education and the fire, from the Fire Academy as well as other institutions were omitted in the fire chief selection process. I believe in the town of Acushnet, its people, its fire department, that they would want this process to be correctly and thoroughly conducted without error. The selection of the most qualified candidate is important to the future and the success of the Acushnet fire department. This fire, the fire chief appointment is, as I mentioned, is the first appointment selected from a process developed not under the laws of civil service. Hence, the omissions, the inaccuracies, and discrepancies of the facts listed above is the reason why I am appealing the appointment, and I am requesting that the Board of Selectmen reevaluate the full assessment process fairly and reconsider the decision for the next fire chief. The fire chief is the head of the department of the most critical safety infrastructure of the town of Acushnet and this community. It is crucial that the community and to the department that the most capable, knowledgeable, and experienced candidate be chosen to lead the Acushnet fire and EMS department. Gentlemen, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to stand up here today and be able to give you these facts and put myself out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, any comments? As I mentioned, I think probably the best course of action would be to take this under advisement. Digest it, go over it again, and report back, if at all. I think, Mr. Aruda, that's what we indicated would take place. This was your opportunity, I think you're, you made some compelling, some compelling arguments. And I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farland is in the room. Mr. Farland, thank you for being here as well. I know it's, what, what really strikes me is, on the surface, if you watch it from the outside, you'd say, wow, this is really uncomfortable, really awkward. But I think it's a testament to Chief Gallagher for the climate and the culture that you've created in your department, Mr. Farland, and you, Mr. Aruda, and we were able to have this conversation tonight and it not be an awkward moment and not be an awkward conversation. Thank you very much. All right. Next item under new business. We have golf support staff.
Yes, I hope.
A process which you're putting forward is a, a thought group.
First of all, I want to say thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to Team Acushnet. What a great, great crew. Basically, the, regarding the new hires for bag boy and grill, grill staff, it's not an extension or expansion of staffing, it's basically replacement positions. The golf committee has already voted unanimously to, to submit them to you for your review for appointment.
I think the key word, Dana, is we, we go through this exercise, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I think we go through this exercise quite often, right? And it's just because of certain young individuals and now found other things to pursue in life, right? And we give them an opportunity to start somewhere and work their way into, and get a work ethic.
Absolutely.
To move on into society, into the corporate world, out of the high school figures and college and things of the like, so. No additional cost to the budgets.
Nope.
We've done that already, it's just a replacement of individuals.
As they go through their sequence of development, they move on. I don't, I don't, personally, I haven't experienced too many that have left the job for another job. Once they get the job, they kind of keep it through high school, college, and then until they get their careers. But with COVID, there were some setbacks with staffing, but now coming out of COVID, everybody wants to get out and hustle again, so that's, that's a good thing. And we are busier than ever, we just finished the month. And we are busier than ever. We just finished the month of May. We actually beat last month's, last year's month of May, which was a great month. It was a great year. And so far, it is the only month of the fiscal year where we surpassed the previous year's months' sales revenues. So. Real brief executive summary, staying with the tone. We are plus 434K on the forecasted budget for this fiscal year. We are compared to last year's high watermark. We're down 135 to last year, but that was the perfect storm of the season. Sunshine, no rain. Everybody was home, kids, families. Nobody was working. Everybody was playing golf. So coming out of that, we're now, we're seeing people going back to work, kids are back at school, activities has kicked up again. We're seeing an 8% reduction in participation. Looking at the numbers more in depth, we've seen an increase 2% on weekends with the product mix minus 8% on the weekday play, which is typically where you're finding your, you know, your guys that have gone to work. They're going back to work. So enough golf. So with that being said, I'm putting it out there, we're probably going to fall in the realm of 1.8 and a half million for the fiscal closing of the season, but depending on weather and participation from here on out, that'll, you know, that'll plate itself out.
When, so people at home don't get all crazy? 1.8 is the final number, but the budget is 1.5 or so.
Correct.
So it's the subtraction of the two numbers. I don't want people at home to think that we're making a profit of 1.8 million dollars.
No.
Okay.
No, no.
Just to be clear.
Yes, thank you.
That's in a couple of years.
Yeah.
Hopefully so.
So, good job.
Great.
I mean, it's, uh, it's good stuff. Hopefully that participation rate will stay up there. I know I've just read some reviews from Mr. Isaac. Course is in great shape, play is good. Staff is very helpful and friendly. So kudos to you and your staff out there keeping everybody going. We got Rangers now to keep in play going. So that's a good thing and that helps drive more people in and say we're not held up.
It also helps them behave a little bit better out there, less repairs, less problems.
We invested a little bit more in salaries, but it's paying off on the back end, right? And that's what we're all about is, you know, what's the return on investment, right? And we're going to look at that as an ROI and say, is it paying off or is it not? If it's not, we'll go revert back to the old, but I'm glad to see that the ROI is really paying off. So that's, that's awesome.
To speak to that too, with COVID actually served a great advantage to us because in the market of golf, we're the low play, low price leader, with the best conditions, municipal golf course in the area. When golfers go play golf and they go play somewhere else, they talk about where they played last or what their best experiences are. So when everybody playing golf through COVID, we kept coming up in the conversation. So now as this weens and everybody goes back to work, we're still seeing a strong support of revenue from those people.
Sure. And word of mouth goes a long way, right?
Very long way.
So they go back to work. They tell their coworkers, you know, I just played here, but it cost me X amount of dollars and you get equal play or better play in Acushnet for a lot less. And then people start trying that out and it's, it's working.
And if we support that with training the staff appropriately and having some additional staffing for ranging and bag boy duties, that all comes together with a better product. So.
Mr. Hankley, anything?
Golf's not really my forte, so I'll just take your word for it.
Yeah, come, please come and visit.
I will come by and visit and check it out.
Definitely come through. I'd love to see you, show you the land and get you up to date on some of our situations.
So, so here's the deal. We, I think we did this years ago. And I think we have to post it as a selectance meeting. But didn't we, we went out, we did a round of golf.
Yes.
Even if it's nine holes, I think we should.
Oh, I don't know if I did a round of golf.
No, you, you did the tour. You did the tour.
Bought the beer.
Let's make a point to do that for Mr. Hankley's benefit at some point over the summer.
Go grab lunch there and then do a tour. That way you know what we're talking about, what's the golf course.
I think we're going to go see Dana first and get some tips, you know.
Sure.
Definitely should limit it to maybe like three holes.
Well, you have a good layout for that.
Hopefully there's not a lot of windows around.
No windows.
Oh, certain areas.
Yeah. So, so Dana, first, first of all, we need a motion to appoint Moreo Almeida and Matos to the golf course.
So moved.
Circus.
That's all of them. He just gave his last names.
So, there's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This made me feel like it was the 1980s and I was picking teams on the playground with the names of Moreo and Almeida. Right? How things come full circle. And then Dana, just a testament to you, we talked about it earlier, the culture of the fire department you had. It's an untold story, but the impact you've had on kids who've walked through that door have worked for you.
It's been awesome. It's one of my favorite things at the job.
You never thought was part of the job description, but it's a, a give back to you. I know one, one man now, Eric Kudo, who always talks about it's the greatest thing that's ever happened to him.
I still hear from Peter Clerk, Mark Sweet, the first guys I came in touch with, they all come back.
Coming all over the years and now they're men, they have families and a lot of it has to do with with your influence that you have had over there and given them an opportunity to make mistakes, build on it, and then, you know, you treat them like they're CEOs.
Yep.
And they're, they're, that's what people, kids need to understand.
As much as responsibilities they're willing to take on, we, we put them in those positions so they feel confident.
It's a, it's a, it's, working for Dana over there, you get an MBA as a 14, 15, 16, 17-year-old, you know, the best education you can get. So thank you.
I push all of our kids to, when they hit 18, to have a brokerage account up and running. Get them started.
No, that's awesome.
Push them. Get their minds going. Get ahead of the game.
That's it. Good for you. All right. Well, thank you. Anything else we need to do? I guess we're.
The only thing that's here, Mr. Deroch.
Yes.
I have no idea what this incumbent short funds.
Yeah, we're going to bring that up at the next meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to?
We are reviewing our expenses and line items at this time of the year. As we know, we come to June. So it's crunch time and we're going to do that process currently.
I just found the money that we can use to close our deficits.
How did I know that was coming? And I was like, do I want to see this today? Today?
Save it till July. I encourage a lot of kids to get brokerage accounts too. Actually, I tell them investment accounts because you know why they call them brokers, right? Because they'll make it broke.
True.
So, you know, educate yourself in finance.
Yeah, junior rock.
Do some reading and dabble around with a thousand bucks, a few hundred bucks.
Absolutely.
Learn, learn the game, but, you know, a lot of people get hurt in that game.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no dive in.
All right.
It's good stuff. Thanks Dana.
Thank you Dana. Good to see you.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
All right.
See you, see you soon.
Next item on the agenda is a designate for Serta. Mr. Deroch had taken that position and did a really good job with it. Mr. Hankley is expressing interest in his.
Motion to appoint.
Second. Serta represents in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
All right, next item, discussion first reading. As you may recall, gentlemen, I sent an email out to Town Administrator and the board. I think it reflects the sentiment of the board. Sorry, I acted on that. Escalating Town Council costs. And, you know, this is something that I've experienced and seen over the years and we had a policy in place. While I'm all for giving staff and key staff and elected boards the resources they need to do the job, we got to be able to, you know, control the amount of, you know, how often we're getting a hold of Town Council. We have a lawyer on board now who can help with that. And so with that said, Mr. Kelly has developed a policy. This is first reading. Ask that the board take a look at it. But essentially it's just to put some structure around Town Council, asking those who want it to, you know, the who, what, where, when, why. It's got to go through the Town Administrator and the board. And then, you know, it's a requisition form. I think it's pretty, pretty basic stuff. Shouldn't keep people from doing what they need to do, but at least just gives us some idea and control of the information flow.
I, I'd be ready to act on it right now. I've already discussed this, read this better. It is something that we've passed practice that we've always had in place and we kind of lost track of that practice with different Town Administrators, but obviously we're at the structural deficits, especially in Town Council the past two years. I think it's cumulative, it's $180,000. That's the number. Two years.
Yep.
So, that's, that's just, we can't continue to go down this road of those kind of deficits and, you know, we get to look at the bills and see where it's being rung up. And, you know, I think there's a time and place where you need to call Town Council and I think there's other times where it's just nice to be able to do it and that's what's been occurring. So I would be ready to vote this policy in today.
Gentlemen, is there a motion to approve the access to Town Council policy?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, for bringing it in.
My pleasure. Dana, maybe you can post this on our webpage or, or, I think it's important for the general public to know that we're doing this.
I will also make sure that all departments.
Absolutely.
The board.
Yes.
Just a quick note, also in your packet, it's a letter from KP. They're going up on basic services from 48,000 to 54,000 next year.
So is that a reminder to go out to bid for our new business?
Well, when you, we'll be discussing that shortly.
Great. Thank you. All right.
I think it's a good remind us, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. All right, I guess the next item is under information only. That's just for all. You don't have to go through that. Town Administrator Report.
All right, Town Administrator Reports. Good segue. First item. I'm working with the Town Accountant to issue an RFP for the audit. The audit went up $10,000 from the last year to this year. I've got an RFP for legal counsel we'll be putting out. I've notified NFP, the health insurance consultant for the town, to compile the necessary data. And we will be issuing an RFP for health insurance after the 14% increase that we got to get with this year. For IOD and P and C insurance, I've met with the District Manager of Maya as well as a representative from Brayley and Wellington, which there are about half a dozen entities that represent these group purchasing entities for insurance. I've met with two of them. We're going to go over the loss ratio sheets for the last five years. I'm going to meet with the others that would be interested and then we'll put out an RFQ. That way we can at least stay ahead of the curve, test the marketplace because if the auditor and legal counsel have increased their rates and health insurance increased the rate, even though Maya kept us flat this year, I imagine it's right around the corner. So we might as well get the best deal possible. There's a list of potential warrant articles for the fall town meetings besides the financial issues that we're going to have to deal with, with a couple of the deficits. And any of the issues that are coming down the pike as far as going forward with going from loans to bonds on the buildings. Also, the FEMA fund approval for COVID testing is in. And the ARPA projects we're going to have to address in the next two to three months.
That would be nice.
We have, we've only gotten $556,000 of our so far. The county hasn't opened their portal yet. The second tranche, which I didn't know that term until two days ago, which means portion.
Yeah, sure. That's up for that.
Is from the federal government is going to be released shortly to the state and then through the state to us.
What's the timeframe on it, do you know?
They're talking about 60 days.
From now?
To get to the state.
What's the anticipated wait once it gets to the state?
We don't know. But the state, the last time moved it fairly quickly through the state to the towns.
Well, that should end the board's conversation of what we're going to do with that ARPA money. We talked about soliciting sidewalks and things of the like. I'm still stuck on that. It's infrastructure. That's what the money was there for and allocated from the federal government to do. So I'd like to have that conversation because we're going to have to do engineering and things of the like. That's going to take a little bit of time. And then we have to spend it by a certain date. It's true, right?
You have to have it, the plans in and the shovels beginning by 24. And you have to have it completed by 26.
So it's happening now.
So it's starting to move. Furniture has arrived. Senior Workout Program. Heather has asked the department heads for potential projects for these folks. Then once we review the projects, then we'll be coming to the board for a final approval for the program, the forms, and we'll go forward. We're looking at that sometime in June. Infrastructure projects you've seen. We're waiting on the earmarks. I've done some work in Lake Street. We've met with the Mayor of Bedford. And that's as far as we're going. TIP project is going through that process. And as you know, the bridge is going up to bid. In addition, the next item, Mr. Chairman, on the agenda is I've put an unemployment compensation service agreement. It's from a company known as Unemployment Taxation Management. And it's a company I've used in numerous municipalities. For very short money, they represent the towns in all unemployment hearings. They do all the filings with the state. And they take care of all of the issues as far as the issues in-house here. They would be able to assist Jasmine. It's a great service and it's $585 a quarter. And we've got a budget of $50,000 that we budget for unemployment. This would free up our staff so our staff doesn't have to respond every time an unemployment claim comes in. Most of them we disavow because someone is working for someone else and might be a call firefighter, let's say. Well, they are not eligible under us, but we still have to file all the paperwork. For this amount of money, it's a great deal. And one of the reasons I brought it before the board is, as you know, I'm the new guy in town. And in other communities, this did not hit the threshold that I would need a board approval. It would just be a signature of the Town Administrator. But I wanted to tell the board about it and see what the board wants on this. If you want to authorize me to sign this agreement, then I'll vote to the board. And I would ask that the board consider these types of agreements. Is there a threshold? They would want me to sign and then report to the board? Or do you want me to bring each one forward to the board? You vote on it and then I sign it.
I think it's, we bring it to the board and then, then we authorize a signature. But I think for $2,340 bucks, and you said to me, I believe, and just for everybody watching in the boards, you said to me that they actually, if there's a claim, or what's called claim, they actually have attorneys that go. So that kind of, you talked about the 50 grand, but it kind of frees that up. So for $2,340 bucks, if we have a claim, they send their personnel in and we're free and clear of any and all expenses.
We don't have to ask KP to represent us.
I think it's a no brainer.
Yep. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Aye.
Good job Dana.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Good job, Mr. Kelly.
All right, we did the, uh, item of meeting mail, uh, future meetings, selectmen's meetings, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, four PM.
You usually do like announcements. Mr. Hankley, do you have anything that you want to offer?
Uh, right now, I'm just still absorbing, uh, taking a lot of it in, listening to a lot of people and, uh, meeting a lot of people in town. Uh, which is nice, trying to get around meeting department heads, uh, on my day off during the week and so far, so good. I've been getting a pretty good reception and, uh, seems to be, you know, easy to navigate. At least it's been quite the help. So I appreciate you. Um, other than that, uh, still ready to work. Looking forward to it.
Great. Mr. Gasper?
I have nothing. Memorial Day's over. Can't wish everybody a happy, safe Memorial Day weekend.
All right.
It's, we'll be gone.
Uh, it's official kickoff of summer, right? So, uh, okay, so the next item, we've got two executive sessions we have to go in and we will not reconvene. So first is.
Excuse me, can I say something? Cause I'm, I have to say something, Sarah, Brian. Um, I'm trying to understand why some of this stuff has to be done without the public's knowledge, without us residents having to know what's going on, cause you're gonna be talking quietly about the soil thing and that, that includes PJ Keating.
What are you talking about?
We don't have that on our agenda.
We're talking about.
In the beginning of the meeting, when you did, when you did the soil meeting, right? You guys were talking about PJ Keating and you had to talk amongst yourselves and da, 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 da.
Did they not?
No, Mr. Gasper is, is, Mr. Gasper said that the board would like to go into executive session.
Correct.
To discuss the lawsuit, which the town was up against the town. So there are certain things that we can and cannot do, right? So in order to, if you have a legal strategy, as you'll see tonight, we're gonna go into contractual negotiations. If you listen to the motion, there are certain things we can discuss. And there's also things that we cannot discuss in public because it's detrimental. So that's.
Excuse me if I'm wrong, but we're not even getting the information that we can have.
That's right.
I don't understand.
Am I wrong with that? I don't, I don't think that I am.
Because, well, I, I'd like to know what happened to them having the cease and desist
and they haven't had an injunction. What's going on? Like, and then all they get charged is a lousy three hundred dollars a day? That's like charging me twenty-five cents if I'm doing something wrong in town. Really?
I think the Board of Health, that's familiar, the Board of Health.
Sweet.
And they're doing a public, uh.
It's a public session.
It's an appeal. It's not a public hearing. It's an appeal.
On the eighth, it's an appeal of, uh, of their order.
Of June eighth?
We, I believe, it's a Board of Health meeting, so.
June eighth? Now, will this be, will this be advertised?
I think it's going on, I wrote something for the June first, it was that council on agent, because originally they did something May twenty-fourth or twenty-sixth. Pardon me if I'm wrong in the dates. I don't.
Yeah, sorry, both been postponed twice.
Postponed twice.
Yes, been postponed twice.
It just came, it just came in that, uh, it's going to be in the cafeteria. And I think it's on the seventh, and it's either the eighth or the ninth. I'm sorry. But it just came in to us.
So it's a Board of Health.
It's not our, uh, here.
It's a Board of Health, um, appeal. Um, PJ Keating's appealing the cease and desist from the Board of Health.
Right.
So that's a Board of Health meeting. So you just watch for the Board of Health's agendas. And it should obviously, it's gotta be posted within forty-eight hours prior to whatever date, though, seventh or eighth or whatever.
Right. But I'm trying to understand the fact that they've had a cease and desist order since when?
And they're still. Substitution is the eighth.
They're still functioning.
In the Board of Health.
Understood.
Cause you know what? Three hundred dollars to them is nothing.
I understood, but the Board of Health is the one who has jurisdiction over that, o, over that particular issue. And so.
Well, why is that? Because you, you do the fi, you're the finance committee as well. Aren't they supposed to put, submit fines to the finance committee?
No, we're not the finance committee. There's a nine-member finance committee.
Right.
Um, that, that does that. So the fines don't, that's usually with revenues and, uh, for being expended from taxation. So fines aren't gone, they don't go through the finance committee. So that's something that the Board of Health will issue a fine.
So the Board of Health regulates the fine.
The fines. And then is, we already had this discussion. It was an open session and we've talked about it numerous times. Matter of fact, I think Sullivan will not talked about, can we up that amount? But by statutory, um, law, you can only fine up to the three hundred dollar threshold with maximum. Yeah. So you can't do no more.
I know that.
Um, and, and, you know, obviously everybody gets it, right? I hear from people all the time, right? And I was just, I was just, as I said, I went to Anthony Street today. Um, and usually when I drive down Main Street, I got my nose out the window like a dog sniffing. Because, and the one thing that I had noticed was the asphalt coming out onto Main Street, ripping around the corner. Um, so there's, there's issues there, right? But again, um, we're, we're in litigation. And I mentioned going into, um, having a, uh, an executive session with the board, as the soil board. With all due respect to Mr. Hankley, I know he's been trying to follow things, but he hasn't been privy to the information that's.
No, we understand that.
That we have that. So it's an update for Mr. Hankley. It's, it's an opportunity for the board to strategize when it comes to some of the issues before we go into open session and have that dialogue with the public.
Okay. May I make a suggestion that Mr. Hankley take a tour of PJ Keating before he even considers talking about it? Cause he has no idea. He should be allowed.
He's got an idea. I don't think he knows what the internals look like.
Correct.
Well, I think that's important, Kevin, that he, he takes a physical look with his eyes.
I, I, I agree.
They're loaded with pitches.
So, so here's the deal.
No, I think seeing it and looking at pitches are two totally different things.
You better see two totally different things.
The gravity of the situation.
Ma'am, look, I'm all for discussion, but as you could see tonight, right, it's just my, I, I like to run a tight ship. And I'm all for having a public discussion. And if you want to be placed on the agenda or if you want to talk to Mr. Hankley about what he should and shouldn't do, I'm all for that. But we've got other business to do and you want to come speak to us, put you on the agenda.
I agree with that. I wasn't telling him what to do or not to do, but as a collective, you are our selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
And that's who I feel I should ask. If he's gonna be making any comments or any decisions about this, he needs to know everything.
I think PJ Keating's management team would be more than willing to have a new selectmen go in and take a tour of. But I don't think he needs to be guided by anybody there.
I think it's.
I think Mr. Hankley could speak for himself.
I think a big part of it. About what he can't.
We're getting port to a violation of the open meeting.
Cause we're not on the agenda to discuss, like, but just trying to give the resident the.
Yep.
It's okay. Thank you and don't hit that spider when you're walking by, Kevin.
Some, it's, it's gotta go right in my.
All right. So we're gonna go into executive session, two exec, two separate executive sessions. Um, one executive session under general law thirty A subsection twenty-one A two to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct contract, contract negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief. If an open meeting will be, will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body as the chair so declares, then the board will not return to public session. Second executive session under general law thirty A subsection twenty-one A three to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with union personnel or to conduct tr, contract negotiations with union personnel, police, fire, ask me DPW. If an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body as the chair so declares, then the board will not return to public session. We will not reconvene. Is there, uh?
Two separate votes.
Two separate votes. On the first one, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Hankley?
Aye.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. On the second one, Mr. Hankley?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We are now going into executive session. We will not reconvene.